Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the City of North Plains City Council's regular session meeting for Monday, December 4th, 2023 at 7:01. Please stand by. I'd like to lead this to the flag. The United States of America, and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mayor Winahan?
Here.
Councilor Kendall?
Here.
Councilor Martinez?
Here.
And Councilor Payton?
Here.
And Councilor Sheldon?
Present.
And Councilor Page is excused this evening. Thank you, Lori, wishing back. This is our consent agenda tonight. We have three amendments: approval of the December 4th regular session agenda, approval of November 20th city council minutes, and resolution number 2250, the strategic communications plan. At this time, are there any corrections or additions to the city council minutes that we need to be aware of?
Remove the prodonement.
Thank you. All right, we have a first and second. Any discussion? All of you, aye?
Aye.
Carrying none? Motion carried. Thank you. Item number six in our agenda. So, item six says we have public comment guidelines. I'm actually going to request that we pull that attachment and then put that underneath item nine for new business and just have a brief discussion about that. But at this time, public comment is the time where we reach the public to speak on items not on the agenda. And at this time, is there anyone in the just amazed to be wrong that was just to speak on items not on the agenda? Okay, did you fill out a card?
We didn't have one yet. I'll get it when we're at the end of the meeting.
And then Lori, before I have the public come up, is there one on one? Or has anything been submitted at our time?
I didn't receive anything prior to the meeting and staff on line and council.
Okay, great. So, so are you willing to come forward and obviously state your name and address for the roster?
Tilt it up a little bit towards your.
Good evening, Mayor. You've been sharing the conversation there in a little bit. Eleven thousand of us back in forty years.
I want to address. Just city and state.
Yeah, I know. The postal address is totally.
Thank you.
I wanted to address to you tonight briefly on the topic of the UGB expansion. Because of the content of Dr. Bates's letter, the planning of your twenty. Sheldon, how the incorrect facts were in our use by the city's advocates for the UGB expansion proposal. I'd like to show how some of those facts natural the original approval of the plan. No other can be used to slow down the referendum. As you know, Dr. Bates, the director of the DLTV, sent a letter to the county planning commission taking exception to three incorrect statements the city faculty made in an attempt to advance the county's ordinance eight nine nine through the planning commission and generates the support of a massive UGB expansion. The simple fact that the director of the DLCD saw enough inaccuracies and misinformation in the case that she needed to weigh in is itself exceptional and something that should be seriously considered by the commission. I think, sorry, those are some of the plans in county how they involved our planning and have people device that he might have. And that have that they had knowledge of in the DLCD that were never given. Using these exaggerators made out statements to further the city's case to take as recommendation from the planning commission is not something I imagine any of you directed at the course of action for giving this into the planning commission. But honestly, what I find more concerning than those incorrect facts regarding the public input process and legal advice is Dr. Bates' second point where she says in part, I'm quoting, "Unlike the HNA, the population forecast to determine the land needed in economic opportunities analysis is optional. The understanding of the recent change in the economic development aspirations led the city of North Plains to select an approach focused on tracking tech base and supporting infrastructure businesses. And during DOA, typically did not have sufficient local employment in the city of North Plains. The city is not locked in to a single DOA, nor is required to amend its UGB to resolve this identified employment name deficit. As it has a discretion to modify its economic development approach and not reapply a DOA at any time. Obviously, this underpins the city's justification to adopt the majority of land and plans to expand onto. With any planning mission, the county planning commission, board of commissioners, and the body were all told repeatedly that the central argument of holding the size of unprecedented expansion was even locked into the state of the DOA. In my testimony, but also in my afterthought, I could be telling the counties in times of instance that cities' liberations and statutes reported on these issues. I think while Dr. Bates's letter is exceptional and misinformation held up dramatically, what she found in this meeting is an example of how the process is finding how there continue to happen to present kind of one sided and link together. Also, it's admitted to help all the testimony of the planning commission, the city's support cases that they believe shows the UGB expansion administrative nature not subject to a referendum. As your incorrect statement, Dr. Bates referenced, this letter seems to be an attempt to advance the city's plan of the county and simply put, facts one side. Majority of the court cases listed the issues such as the city's administrative role of renewing streets or paying employees, not substantially similar to a UGB expansion. The court of appeals case listed makes the case that to be subject to a referendum, where it is the budgeted future meaning they're limited in duration, they're large in scale, and they show discretion for the city council. These texts are abundantly met by our support and it was permanent duration, doubles the size of the city, and has discretion in how much land, as you can see in the DLCD's letter, and which land brought in. This case is bolster our case for evidence of the ability to create a chief. The agency's rethink review process, within this messaging and fact based approach. As Chair Harrington said in the county commission meeting, this issue not yet closed until settled at the city level. I believe the proper place to settle is for ninety years with the voters and in a fact based way. I encourage you to direct staff to stop the effects and keep the referendum off the ballot as both the base of the city's resources and contrary to the Democratic engagement on major civic issues. Instead, I encourage you to speak to the voters and make the case for four ninety in public and fact based. I would be happy to state any form of debate for town hall or other format, to help inform voters about that choice of what they may. Lastly, I believe that the county has this link there that will one day be looking to create a new UGB expansion plan. I am agreeable to sit down and talk with any or all of you at any time, see how best we can folks who fought against four ninety second name visit process, find how big and experts, we don't think any mistakes in the understandings and basics of UGB expansion. We've got a plan that will smaller and more suited to the city, and indeed is more built to help here more vibrant.
Would you be so kind also to fill out a? All right. Now, seeing any votes on Zoom for public comment? So I'll go ahead and move on to item number seven A. It is ordinance four ninety two, it's creating the economic development commission. This is the first reading. So Andy, I'm going to turn this over to you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. The entire time, the staff person that was working on this so diligently, I figured he would be here to present on it. And then it just so happened he was on medical leave at the same week. So I'll be I'll be taken over the best that I can. But the good news is we've had a couple of work sessions on that with the EDC and the city council jointly. And then in subsequent meetings with staff and council, talking over some of the issues and some of the language in this. Real simply, without going verbatim back to Bill's report, there are a couple of goals that the economic development committee wanted to see in partnership with the city council. One was that one was to really codify that body into ordinances to make it a permanent standing committee, to change the name to Economic Development Commission, which was sort of a moniker that other groups like this have in other cities. Expand the membership to seven members and then really kind of give some bones to the scope and mission of the group. That's it. At a high level, there are obviously some other, some other things in there that are talked about in Bill's staff report and also in the proposed ordinance itself. But I will note that in the staff report to make this popping up there that to, the council does have the ability to adopt this in one reading by having the ordinance and previous meetings and in a work session. It's been posted for at least seven days. And if all council members adopt unanimously, that could be done by emergency. And therefore, the EDC would be a standing committee by the time the new year starts. That is one of the options is laid out by Bill. The other one is to just do the first reading and continue the hearing on. So I hope I summarized what he would have said otherwise. But if there's any questions, please let me know.
Councilor Payton, I'll start with you. Do you have any questions, please?
Thank you. Is there any reason why we would need to pass an emergency ordinance? Is there anything time sensitive for that that matter?
Oh, okay. Well, as Lori, our city reporter, was so helpfully stating, it's not necessarily an emergency. That is just one avenue in our code to adopt an ordinance. I guess more to the point of your question, I think the the commission, I believe, wanted to start recruiting at the beginning of the year. Just they just had the opportunity to know that, all right, we need to go seek two new members in January rather than, you know, February, you know, when this wouldn't become official until probably mid. Yeah, yeah. If it continued until January, first meeting, then thirty days, and then we're into February. I guess that was their that was their friendly request.
Okay, that answers my question. Thank you.
Very good. So do we all understand? So the the request is to adopt ordinance four ninety two to amend the municipal code by adding an economic development commission and requiring at least five members to be resident of the city of North Plains. So we have a sample motion in the process. And then I will add a second one.
I'll make a motion. I'm moved to approve the first reading, ordinance four ninety two, the municipal code. Early in the family, not involved.
Thank you. All right, we have a first and a second. Any discussion? Carrying none? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Carrying none? Motion carried. Ordinance number four ninety two is an ordinance of the city council of the city of North Plains for an amending municipal code by adding an economic development commission and requiring at least five members to be residents of the city of North Plains. So now we can certainly adopt ordinance number four ninety two. It's their motion.
I'm moving to adopt the ordinance four ninety two to amend the municipal code to permanently establish economic development commission.
My second.
All right, we have the first. And a second, any discussion? Carrying none? All of you in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of you in favor say nay. Carrying none? Motion carried. Thank you. Item B A is resolution twenty two fifty one, awarding a contract for the commercial Glencoe sidewalk project to SubCom excavation. Andy, I will serve you.
Okay, Mayor, I tried to put out the the highlights into the staff memo. This is a CIP project combining infill sidewalks on both Commercial Street and on the west side of Glencoe, coming up around the corner, connecting into existing sidewalks that would allow pedestrians to walk all the way up to North Avenue. The city bid the work in October. We held the bid opening in mid-November. We received ten bids for the project, which was pretty strong interests. And you'll you'll see here in the memo from the Three J Consulting, the city engineer, the public works director, the bid tab summary and the various details of the the bidders. Of the six bidders that are determined to be responsive, SubCom Excavation Utilities have the lowest qualified bid of five hundred and fifty-five thousand. Staff suggests you add on a ten percent contingency for that project, just because it is infill. Things can happen for total authorization of six hundred and ten thousand, five hundred dollars. Also listed the engineer's estimate for the work, which was just over six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. The funding sources are listed there, a combination transportation bond, URA, streets fund. And the timeline, we anticipate mobilization after the first of the new year. If there's any other questions, I'm happy to respond. SubCom did previous work in the city. They've done a few projects. The last one that I recall was the Veterans Park. They did. They were the the GC on that.
Thank you for that reminder. Any questions from council?
Andy, the the funding, what's the goal that's coming out of each one today? Do you have any funding?
I, no, I don't. I, there are there are budgeted expenditures, though. I'm trying to remember. I think it was two hundred and seventy-five thousand from the Urban Renewal Agency, like two hundred thousand from the transportation bond and the remainder from the street. No, it's it's mostly URA, because that's downtown. It's a downtown commercial street project. And then the other portion was mostly from the fuel tax, fuel tax measure.
Thank you for my question. What do you know, did you know it's outside or the sidewalk first because on north side? But undeveloped area, you're not going to put sidewalks there, are you? Surely not.
Correct. Right. There won't be.
They got developed and they should develop that, correct?
That's right.
Councilor Payton? Councilor Martinez?
Okay.
Okay, I have a few, nothing too elaborate. But there's, the first point is when I look through all the documents, including the contract, it all looks pretty clean to me. And it appears to me, although I want to verify this, is that the project manager will actually be Three J and not our public works director. But, you know, my only issue, not not an issue with that, I just want to make sure that we have a project manager who has eyes on it. And I don't know how many visits that means that's going to be. But oftentimes, we want to make sure that, you know, they're doing the work that's prescribed in the detail and the specs and all of those things. And I'm not saying they're not going to. I just want to make sure that is is Dustin going to be involved in the process of the, you know, not the, not anything other than the oversight?
Right. Thanks. Please, Council Sheldon. But before the work starts, we would have a pre-construction meeting with the contractor and outline those roles, responsibilities. Typically, Three J has a certified inspector that's here once a week looking at various projects. And they'll they'll check on work and check against plans. Dustin also has the ability to. He's a certified public improvement inspector. So he he'll he'll do that from time to time. And we were considering, well, this would be his first project to be able to have a bigger role in that. Because Homestead was really the only other public that has one street improvement project. When he came on board, we didn't feel like he should be thrown into that without knowing the plans. But he's much more familiar at this point. But it is still kind of a co-partnership just because Three J did all the engineering and they do have an inspector with the plans that comes through each week and just monitors our various projects.
Okay, that that satisfies that. I think with the rest of it, I went through the tabulation. As always, we have a contingency in there. I just, I don't want to see us allow the contractor to basically, I know he's not going to implement any change orders without approval. But, you know, sometimes when you get a lower bidder, even though he's a responsive bidder, you know, and we have history with him. It, my knowledge is pretty good. But I still have questions. I just want to make sure that we've got a shepherd for the flock, so to speak.
I'm familiar with the conversation. I hear you loud and clear. Understood. Yes.
Very good.
Some of my same questions. And thank you, Council Sheldon, for asking those. I, you know, think about the community outreach and how the residents in that area will be notified. Do we have a plan for that?
Yes, Mayor. The good news on this is this will be far fewer homes affected than on three thirteenth. We alerted all of the the residents on that frontage, which that that work is supposed to be mobilizing sometime this month. So we'll see there. But yes, we will definitely have that plan. And again, that's something that's outlined during the pre-construction meeting.
Okay. And may I ask for any questions?
Just following up on what you said, Carrie, and comment. So did you get a letter in the mail? Are we going to do, how is it going to go on house door to door to door? And, you know, show our face? How do we do this? What's what's the proper way or what's the most, again, that, you know, people have questions about? And I don't know. I just want to be just be a good project. You know, I just, I don't know how many people we're talking about on that street, five or six, eight. Maybe, I don't know. Just a thought. Let's throw it out there for discussion.
Councilor Sheldon, I'm not, I didn't do, Kendall, Council Sheldon was before. Council Kendall, I didn't do the notification before. That was all the public works director. I believe he may have done door hangers on each door at that point.
I just wish that it should be open to available to questions.
Oh, always. Always. Yeah, no, we're 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 an open book. We'd rather give people advance notice. And, you know, public, I think we even published the project limits online and things like that, too. That way, people have questions, they can see there. Yeah.
All right. There are no further questions. I'll hand it over.
Resolution number two two five one, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with SubCom Excavation and utilities for the commercial and Glencoe construction work. Outlay.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion? Carrying none? All of you in favor say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Carrying none? Motion carried. Item number nine, new business. So I wanted to, Councilor, many of you have noticed, but under the public comment period, Lori has taken the public comment guidelines that are usually on the card and created a PDF and attached them as an attachment to our agenda. I'm really wishing that. There have, there are, were a couple of questions, comments from a few of you. And I wanted to move this forward and put this underneath business just so that we all had a moment to reflect on that and also provide any kind of feedback or comments or any additions that we want to be aware of. The 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 current process has been followed, but we just are trying to make this more transparent so that when the public does come up and provide public comment, that they are aware of our rules and 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 basically for providing public comment during our our time here at council. And I wanted to just also make sure that there was any, you know, just if there were any questions or comments again, that we wanted to provide feedback to Lori and Andy if we needed to update anything. There is an overwhelming interest in this statewide. I can attest to that just through my ordinance associate and listener. Mayors talk about this all the time, and they just want to know what other cities are doing and what their process is and what their policies are and that sort of thing. So I just wanted to make sure that we understood what our process was and then give you all an opportunity to provide feedback. It's always been sort of a, you know, it's been there. It's, but here it is in front of you. And so at this time, I'd love to hear if you have any further comments or questions about this. And then just make sure that we have a consensus that our current process is something that we can all continue to apply that. So I will bring this up to the floor. Councilor Payton, I'll start with you. I know I don't mean to take on your hand, but in Zoom, I want to make sure that your voice is.
Thank you. No, I I appreciate that. No, I I am in full consensus with the outlines, public comment portion. And I really have no other comment. So I appreciate you bringing it up for visibility.
Councilor Martinez?
I think it's a great idea.
Councilor Kendall?
It looks good. I covered everything. I'm thinking to get out of hand. It's been stopped. Do like the topics tonight, are those all submitted in writing? Do them, is that how that happens tonight? I'm just curious.
It was this time. It's not always.
Right.
But we do, and I appreciate that he provides written, because they're really hard to hear on the microphone. But it's not required that they provide written as long as we have the recording.
Then it's helpful for folks to read from their, you know, comment and then provide Lori with the comment so that she gets backup.
No offense to this people, but you read it so fast, I couldn't, I couldn't understand it all. I mean, I know you had five minutes and I I think maybe that's the, the mayor has that property. How do you do that? I mean, if you, you couldn't have read that in ten minutes, could you have been slow down?
Okay, if it helps, I can email it out tomorrow if it helps to anybody that.
Okay, all right. It was fast. But I'm okay with everything.
Okay, Council Sheldon?
Well, I'm generally okay with this. There's two questions that come to my mind first. First one is always, is it statutory and does it meet statutory requirements? So I guess that's a legal question, potentially. I'm assuming our city attorney has reviewed this. If he hasn't, he needs to. So I don't, I'm not in favor of enacting it. Yet I know it's not something we need to vote on necessarily, but it's kind of a policy. So I want to make sure we get it right. And the other question I have is, what's five minutes? I mean, what is the written rule? Is there a written rule? Is it at the discretion of the mayor? I don't want to be here for four hours and fifty-nine minutes or five hours or six. You know, how, you know, five minutes, we can go forever. And we really haven't had those occasions necessarily. But do we have the discretion to limit it to two minutes? It seems the county does. So I want to know what the rules are. I'm not going to engage in anything until I know what the rules are. Give me the guardrails and that's fine. And it's fine if we have a document. It's fine if you send it out to anybody who requests to come in front of us or have a handout for them when they fill out the card, whatever it is they need to do. I don't have any problems with that. I just want to make sure that the process is clear, crystal clear to what our responsibilities are as a board and our responsibilities are statutorily.
Andy, I think I'm going to have you answer this. I know that we, it's a chatter, but I'd like for you to comment on that.
Yeah, sure, Madam Mayor. The answer to your question, Council Sheldon, is kind of both. It's a mix of modeling. It's a mix of model language from League of Oregon Cities about how to handle and this isn't necessarily a big issue with North Plains, thankfully, but it is, as the mayor was leading to across the state. People are getting a little nasty with sort of comments at public meetings, especially virtually, when they feel like they're a bit anonymous, even though they're fucking on the screen. So we wanted to at least put something in the document, especially for those people that are joining virtually. They have a chance to see something that's not on the card. When they're, when people do sign up and do a testimony, they see that language there. So we wanted to provide that information, like you're going to be the guidelines, the five minutes for city council meetings, that is in charter. Now, as you pointed out with the Board of Commissioners, you have the prerogative. You can always take a vote at the beginning and just say, you know, because of X, Y, Z, we may limit it to three minutes or something so we can hear more voices. You have that prerogative. But it's kind of a combination of those things. We wanted to just kind of keep it simple and really encapsulate language that are on these public comment cards, especially for people that are going to be online. Or maybe they're looking, I'm going to go to that meeting. I want to testify. Here are the guidelines before you show up there. Because that's something that county does, too. We've seen that in the planning commission meetings, Board of Commissioner meetings. I know Aaron's looked at those. When we testify upfront, they have all their guidelines spelled out.
Alright.
And speaking of Zoom, Andy, you know, I know that you and I had conversations actually about looking at council rules in general. And this has actually, we've had conversations about this probably in the last year, year and a half. So it's something that even many cities across the state of Oregon have ongoing conversations about. And so you know, as a maybe future agenda item, I would like to look at the last time that we actually updated our council rules and see if we need to tweak those in any way to bring them, you know, more current to, to kind of our situation. Hours in general, not like North Plains hours, but just, just bring them current. And because we have these hybrid meetings and you know, people are online. I know I do a lot of Zoom meetings where you cannot comment. Like, you have to raise your hand in order to be recognized to enter into a public comment situation. So I want to make sure that we're current, we're, we're, you know, equitable for everybody, but I want to make sure that we all understand what the rules are in this environment that we have. So maybe a future agenda item for twenty twenty-four could be something like review those kind of council rules and also incorporate, you know, our high grid approach to how we navigate that and manage that.
I, I think that's a great topic, Mayor. I can remember probably the last time we did this. It was definitely before a pandemic because Spencer, Spencer Parsons was a city attorney back then, and we did that at the senior center. So a couple of things have changed since then. So I'm all for that review.
So it sounds like we have consensus with how this has been navigated. So thank you for that. Alright, moving on to item number ten, unfinished business. I know nothing is currently on the menu here, but I do want to make a comment. I know that we had the North Plains Historical Society here last time. There was comments and questions about their connection with the city of North Plains. And there was a lot of questions and comments focusing around that. I, as as the mayor put out in Oregon Mayor's Association listserv question to all the mayors in Oregon, and I have some feedback for the historical society and for the city. And so I'm going to, I'd like to maybe wrap that up and at least let the historical society hear what other cities in the state of Oregon are doing.
That would be wonderful.
With their society. And then we'll, we'll maybe figure out. And it's really important to be because I know I've talked to Joyce over the years about the importance of preserving our history.
Correct.
And I would probably mention, say, that I could speak to this council and and that it's extremely important for us for the art history. We just need to figure out some, what that looks like. We know that we're sort of limited with our space. We can't just, you know, if I could wave my lawn and have a place for you, I would do that in a minute, but I'm going to talk right now. But I want you to convey that message back to the, to the group that will, that I've got some information to share.
Okay.
And then we'll figure it out.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet. No problem. Item eleven A is manager report. Anything that you'd like to highlight, Andy?
No, Madam Mayor, just, well, I would have hit two items and I bet you'll do it in your report. So I'll defer my time.
Right. Any council reports?
I'm going to comment. So when does the two building inspector, they can start? With the public works building?
When will that start?
Yeah.
They're still, they're supposed to start. They got all the permits finally. See, I won't, I won't bore you with some of the the journey we've been on with our favorite agencies on this. But they should be able to start mobilizing in Rock and doing some of the erosion control and some of the grading. If not this week, next week for sure.
Are we going to have a bidding ceremony?
Yeah, the chamber is organizing something for December sixteenth. I believe Cindy was going to send something out tomorrow.
Third is the, for the new fencing for North Avenue. Is that going as proceeded or I don't know, some permits waiting for them to work on, going for the fences?
Counselor Smith, I'd have to get back to you. I'm not familiar with what the planning department has been seeing in that regard. So, yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't know for sure.
What's that got passed? Are they repairing fences, you know, and that's something I need to go online with myself?
You're more than welcome to, but I don't, I don't know personally.
Don't get approved? But one guy had, is set up for like a year. The post would be that and putting that's.
I can check in with Steve tomorrow on that. I just, I don't know. I haven't heard anything, so I'll take that as yeah, I guess we could take that as good, but I haven't had to do any sort of follow-ups. I assume things are, are working.
You know, I've got one more. We run the historical society. I know when we were plotting spots over there, for North Avenue, they think the historical society wanted a platform in cemetery. As a let me know where was that? A sign of the art for?
No, that stuff is written, though.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I have not heard anything. I mean, that's something we can put on unfinished business and find out and get that to you on that.
I know that was a big thing in there. They wanted that at one of the parks.
Sure.
Talking about putting maybe some other historical ones up, too. Might know better than I do.
Alright, any other council reports? So I know that we have our next meeting on, actually, December the eighteenth is the holiday mixer. So there's a breakfast and then an evening event. Those things are being put in. So hopefully, we will see you and or your spouse or significant other. Lori's dialed in. She'll make sure that, you know, she's going to need an R C P and that sort of thing. So make sure that you reply to her and encourage other commissioners and board members that you connect with to attend. That would be really great.
I'm going to make it known that this week, I'll bring them to the meeting.
Okay, it's canceled. Lucky you. It's canceled this week.
Oh, is it?
Yes.
Oh.
You have an honor.
I also know that Lori has also put in the twenty twenty-four calendar. Hopefully, you all have been able to give her feedback on the dates that she's randomly used a lot of it for all of us. And then I suspect that in January, we will have a complete list. So if you haven't had a look at that, make sure that you do get back from Lori. So she can update that, the executive schedule for the board and commission meetings. Today, Andy and I, we, this afternoon, we sat in and participated in the Washington County Corning Committee Retreat. We talked a lot about, just like the bylaws of the city, C C. And we also looked at future M STIP projects. So currently, there are twenty-five M STIP projects on that list, and they are looking to whittle it down to ten. So it's a, it's a big, it's a big, I mean, it's like actually cutting trees, if not a will. So essentially, they're looking at the four commissioners districts, one, two, three, and four. Cities in those districts have presented projects for the twenty-three, twenty-eight M STIP program. And obviously, our, we have one on the list, the roundabout. So I did a little horse trading today with my fellow friends and mayors in the town, in the community, just trying to convince them the importance of our project. So that's kind of how that sort of went down. And then I know Andy and his colleagues, staff from other cities, they were also in the room and they were also able to get feedback and vote and that sort of thing. So it was, it was a, all in all, it was a pretty good day. But again, really important, you know, the M STIP program has been around since eighty-two. Yeah. And I know Glenn Coe wrote when it was updated, Glenn Coe overpassed. That was an M STIP project. So hopefully, our project will stay in the top ten. So I'll keep you posted.
Question is, what are they going to decide in twenty-four?
Yeah, deciding.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned. Stay tuned. Any other council reports? Anything, Andy? Needs to be addressed? Alright. Alright, well, this brings us to item five A. This is our executive session. And at this time, unfortunately, we will have to say goodnight to the audience members. And for those who are in line, I'll bring this over to Lori and then she has a script to read, and then we'll
View the script and then I will. Really? Yeah. Andrea, sorry, I'm going to have to eject you from the meeting respectfully. We're going into an executive session to discuss some confidential matters. If you're out there, that's just a warning. Thanks for joining.
Sure, thanks.
Thank you. The city council will now meet an executive session under O R S one nine two dot six six zero parentheses two parentheses H. To consult with council concerning the legal rights and duties of a public body with regard to current litigation or litigation likely to be filed. Only news media representatives and staff designated by the city council are permitted to attend the executive session. News media representatives, staff, and council members are respectfully directed not to report on any of the discussions that occur during the session, except to state the general subject as previously announced. The council will return to regular session if there is a need for action on the executive session item. No final action or decision may be taken in executive session. Any materials distributed will be collected by the city recorder at the end of the session. Thank you, Lori. Andy, I'm going to defer you directly or to Chris?
I'm going to.
Right, coming back into regular city council session at twenty-three. Excuse me. Are there any last parting words or thoughts before I enter the norrean evening for this evening? The jingle is Thursday. Just wanted to make sure that you all are aware of that. I'm going to be driving Santa Claus, singing parade. We'll circle back around probably in front of senior center, maybe around seven o'clock hour, whatever. Please, we'll have the tree lighting, hot chocolate, Santa time, carolers, and all the festivities. So we sort of hope that all of you can join us at that time.
Bring your rain slicker.
I'm sorry?
Bring your rain slicker.
Yeah, bring your reindeer. Not your reindeer, but your reindeer. Alright, with that, I will then go ahead and close the city council meeting at eight forty-four. Denial. Denial goes to the council.